Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, September 23rd, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from September 4th, 2024, September 9th, 2024, received commissioners. Any corrections, additions? Minute was staying as submitted. Proclamation. National Voter Registration Day proclamation. City of Helena, whereas voting is the foremost right and responsibility of citizens of the United States of America, whereas active and engaged citizens regardless of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the foundation of democracy, and whereas for any democracy to work, all eligible citizens must be able to vote for their representatives without barriers in free and fair elections, and whereas the hallmark of good citizenship is community participation, including informed voting in every election in which a ballot is received. Whereas good citizenship includes respecting other points of view, keeping an open mind, and taking care of one another. And whereas a thriving democracy includes governments that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable, now therefore be it resolved, I Wilma J. Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day. Throughout this city, and we join the League of Women Voters of Helena area in reminding citizens to check their voter's registration at myvoterpageMT.com, M-Y-V-O-T-E-R-P-A-G-E-M-T.com, to ensure that they are ready and able to vote in the upcoming election. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 23rd day of September 2024. Wilma Collins, Mayor, Danae Claiborne, Clerk of the Commission. Is Ms. Johnson around? Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to say a few words?
Right now?
It's up to you.
Hello? I'm Rebecca Johnson. I'm a volunteer member of the League of Women Voters of Helena. We're a nonpartisan organization that works very hard. All of our volunteers are very dedicated to ensure that every eligible Montanan, especially in the Helena area, registers to vote and vote. And we just are out there trying to encourage everyone to, you know, know the importance of voting and having their voice heard. So, thank you very much for this proclamation. It's very important to us. And thank you. All have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay.
Order appointments. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the following board appointments. For the Helena Regional Airport Authority, I move the reappointment of Jason Davis to a first full term on the Helena Regional Airport Authority as a joint city-county representative. The first term will expire September 1st, 2027. And for the Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Technical Advisory Committee, the appointment of Richard Sloan to a first full term on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Technical Advisory Committee as a non-motorized advocate at large.
Second?
As we move and second it, any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consent agenda.
Mayor, I think you forgot to take public comment on the last one. Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier.
What last one?
The board appointments.
I did ask, and she said there was no...
Mr. Mayor, I do have it marked that you asked for public comment.
Sorry, Mayor.
Present. Okay. Consent agenda. Who's here for that? I guess no one. Okay, claims. Title funds acceptance, West Ridge Fuel Reduction Project. Any comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this? I'll entertain a motion for claim paid from 8/12/24 through 8/30/24, checks number 201311 through 201742, ACH number 446 through 452 for a grand total of $4,132,372.76.
Mr. Mayor, I will move consent agenda items A and B.
Second?
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Bid awards. Consider bid awards to complete the repair of historic Helena Fire Tower Project Number 23-0923. Director Smith and/or Superintendent Marr, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This item is to talk about the bid we received for the fire tower. So, we put the project out to bid July 19th. It closed August 15th. One bid was received, and that was from Dick Anderson Construction. It was for $385,803. Dick Anderson Construction has significant experience working on historic structures, and they're going to be using the same repair plan that we were going to use with the previous contractor. And they're also contracting with Dick Schmidt, who was co-author of the repair plan originally for the fire tower. So, we'd like you to consider awarding the contract to the bid to Dick Anderson Construction. The proposed repair project will stabilize the fire tower according to historic standards into the future and improve public safety. Staff is recommending awarding the repair of the fire tower, Project 23-0923, to the lowest responsible bidder, Dick Anderson Construction, in the amount of $385,803. And there was some question about the, where the funding would come from, the extra funding for that project. And I know Director Danielson is ready to talk about that.
Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
So, I met with the Parks Director and the Parks Superintendent about the bid for the fire tower after they received the bid. Through various funding sources, not only through general fund contributions, but also pending TIF fund contributions of almost $75,000, and private donations of $5,000, and a Montana history grant of $8,000. All of that combined, the total funding that we have currently for the fire tower project is $271,486. So, that does come short of what the bid was for from Dick Anderson. After speaking with the Parks Superintendent and Parks Director, they felt it prudent to add another 10% contingency to that bid cost, just based on how construction projects have been going the last couple of years, unforeseen, you know, circumstances come through. So, that would actually do an estimate of another $38,580 to the project for total funding cost of $424,383. With the current funding appropriations that are in the fiscal 25 budget of $271,486, there's a funding needed of $152,897 left that is currently unappropriated in the budget. If the Commission recalls, there was a grant that was received by Mr. William Grainer for a grand total of $83,113 specifically to be used for historic preservation projects. In the fiscal 23 budget, excuse me, fiscal 25 budget, the Commission did approve in our capital processes $30,000 of that grant to be used for the trolley and also, I think it was the train, sorry. So, which leaves us $53,113 of that grant. And we felt that it was prudent and in the, you know, in the name of the gifter to be used for historic preservation, the fire tower would certainly fall under a historic preservation project. With allowing that to be used toward the funding, that leaves us just shy of $100,000 needed for the fire tower project at this time. I do believe that our current statutes allow the Commission to do a budget adjustment for the $53,000 grant without having to go through a full budget amendment because the statute indicates that appropriations may be adjusted for trust funds or obligations authorized by trust covenants and/or for any fund or gift donations. So, that, the grant for Mr. Grainer would fall under a budget adjustment for that, for that fact. The remaining adjustment, I believe, for $100,000, if the Commission so desires to allocate that money, and proposing to use it out of the general capital fund cash reserves. This is separate from the general fund. This is actually the capital fund. And I believe the statute allows for a budget adjustment, appropriations to be allowed by the Commission for that, by using the investment interest earned in that fund in the last fiscal year, which was about $187,000. That statute says the governing body may authorize adjustments to appropriations funded by fees throughout the budget period. Adjustments of fee-based appropriations must be fully funded by the related fees for services, fund reserves, non-fee revenue such as interest income. And so, I believe that the statute allows for a budget adjustment using interest income and its reserves to use for the remaining costs of the project. And if the Commission should agree with those as a funding sources to fully fund the project, we'll bring a resolution to the Commission on the next full Commission meeting in order to solidify that decision.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions for Director Danielson? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Danielson, that's very helpful. One of the things I was thinking about is would there be potential in order to lessen the impact on the capital reserves to utilize $50,000 and then go after a TIF match? So, use $50,000 to do and then another 50 from the TIF?
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, at this time, I'd have to talk to the Community Development Director and his team about further future TIF funds. I know that the TIF grant of $74,650 is still pending. It was authorized by the Commission. However, due to the scope of the project increasing, there is a potential we could discuss with them for more TIF grant money.
I think that is, I mean, it is really within the definition of, you know, what the purpose of a TIF district is, especially in terms of ensuring the, you know, vitality of our historic structures and places. So, I think that might be appropriate.
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, I think that that's appropriate as well, and we can certainly pursue that information before we come back to the Commission for a full resolution to appropriate funds.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would have to agree with Commissioner Dean with the going, attempting to ask the TIF Board for additional funding. I was on the TIF Board a few years ago when we recommended that to the Commission at the time, was that $74,000. And I, I know I've had a chance to speak with some of the members on the TIF Board, and I think, I think there might be some funding available not to speak for them. But if we can, I'd be all in favor for going after some more. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to add one thing, is that typically before we award a bid, we have committed funding for a particular project. So, I just wanted to make note of that as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised online.
Would you please let him in?
Kathy Macefield.
You have the floor, Kathy.
Good evening. I just wanted to mention that the Montana History Foundation grant is, excuse me, is not available anymore because the project had to be completed by the end of, either the end of this month or the end of next month, and it's not going to happen. So, that $10,000 that was previously awarded is no longer available.
Thank you. Do we have any others? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I will move to recommend awarding the repair of the Helena Fire Tower Project 23-0923 to the lowest responsible bidder, Dick Anderson Construction, in the amount of $385,803.
Second?
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. City of Helena, Bill Roberts Golf Course Solar Project Bid Award. City Project 24-06, Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This is the second time we've advertised for bids for this project. The first time, we did not receive any responsible bidders. So, looking at the project, what we found out is solar installers are not well-versed in underground installing the electricity such as boring and doing the conduit underground. So, we split the project into two different projects so that we can get a company that does underground utilities, and they do it well, we know that part of it, and then get a solar installer that can do the panels and everything so that we can split this project out. So, then we advertised again. We did receive four bids. The lowest bid was non-responsive. There were a few issues with the bid itself, so we had to reject that bid. We couldn't accept it. It just didn't fit the requirements. So, we went with the lowest, second bid, the lowest responsible bidder, and that was Onsite Energy, Inc., for $181,573. With that, this is only one portion of the project, so we will still have to do the underground. And we have not got a solid quote on that yet, but we are looking around $70,000 to get it installed and hooked up when we can get the contractor to actually give us the quote on that. With that, it brings the overall price of the, or estimate of the contract with contingency, and everything is at $270,000. That is more than the $240,000 that was bid. So, once we get the quote and exactly what we need, we will be bringing a BA forward to use the $50,000 that was from Northwestern Energy from the previous solar project at the city shop. We will just bring that forward to you to see if you're willing to do that, and then we can go forward and award the underground too when we, when that comes, comes to fruition. So, it is our recommendation to award the bid to Onsite Energy, Inc. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Leland. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So, Commissioner, or Director Leland, the dollar amount in the most recommended motion is $181,573. Is that?
Mayor and Commissioner, that is correct because that's just the portion of the project that we are actually awarding with this contract.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back during the ARPA discussions, we had set aside a certain amount of funding for solar projects. Is this one of those or no?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is the amount that was set aside for, in the, in the budget for that project. The ARPA one was the city, city project that was previously constructed on that one. So, this is the budgeted one for this year.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to award Bill Roberts Golf Course Solar Project, City Project 24-06, to the lowest responsible bidder, Onsite Energy, in the amount of $181,573.
Second?
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Commissioners, proposals? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I wanted to just read for the public record an email that I had. I forwarded to the city manager to then send on to the Commissioners today and wanted to make sure to put it on the public record tonight. This morning, I received a call from Commissioner Reed noting a potential conflict in the signed ordinance vote and our online meeting participation resolution. I'm very appreciative to Commissioner Reed for flagging it. As you may recall, we first heard and passed the first passage of the signed ordinance on July 15th. The Commission voted to table final passage of the item on August 12th and rescheduled the hearing for September 9th. The signed ordinance, under consideration, on September 9th included a fee. The final passage of our online meeting participation resolution was on August 26th. During our September 9th meeting, I was in Washington, DC for work and zoomed into the meeting. I had alerted staff earlier in the summer that this would be the case, and they were very helpful in accommodating moving the FY '25 budget hearing to August 26th instead of September 9th, for which I am grateful. But despite being focused on the overall policy of the signed ordinance, I should have realized that there was a fee component in that that would have triggered our online meeting participation in terms of the signed ordinance's original language and would have, I would have abstained or requested that we hold the item until we were all in person as outlined in the resolution. The signed ordinance was amended and the fee was removed from the final ordinance the Commission ultimately passed. Although my vote prior to the removal of the fee would not have changed the outcome, I'm happy to change my vote to abstain if that's something the Commission would like me to do. I appreciate Commissioner Reed for flagging this and all of the help from the city attorney and city clerk's office in sorting this out today. I'm glad that we have this type of issue flagged as we reconsider new options through our various softwares to assist in administering this policy. And I remain fully supportive of our online meeting participation resolution and will be more diligent in its application. In the future, I will be ready to bring up any potential issues in real time and hope that the rest of the Commission will do the same. And thanks, everyone, for understanding.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments from the Commission? Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Proposal? Report of the City Attorney?
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager?
Mayor, with your approval, I'd like to invite Director Smith up to speak to grant acceptance, acceptance of the DNRC Queen City Fuels Reduction Project.
You have the floor, Director Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
We're here today to ask the Commission for acceptance of a grant. The grant we're speaking to today is the DNRC Queen City Fuels Reduction Project Grant. It is a $100,000 grant with the $25,000 matching funds that will be coming out of the City of Helena Open Space Maintenance Funds. This will expedite the management of the forest fuel mitigation that we do. A little bit of a background of what we do and how much we do and when we do it. We approximately, just for math purposes, have 2,500 acres of open land, and we hit 10% of it each year. So, 250 acres a year, year one, year 11, year 21. In a perfect world, you rotate every 250-acre parcel each year. So, this particular parcel will help facilitate, facilitate the forest fuel reduction work within the Mount Helena City Park. Staff recommendation is that the City of Helena accept a grant subaward HZF-24-005 from the Montana Department of Natural Resources to fund the completion of 110 acres of forest fuel reduction work on the north face of Mount Helena City Park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any comments or questions? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to accept a grant subaward HZF-24-005 from the Montana Department of Natural Resources to fund the completion of 110 acres of forest fuel reduction work on the north face of Mount Helena City Park.
Second?
As we move and second it, any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Ryan Swakart, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ben Kiper, the Chair of the HCC. I'm going to sub in for Ryan tonight, so I apologize for the switch up. So, this coming Wednesday, September 25th, we're hosting a open house at the Civic Center. That's from 4:30 to 6:30, and we are inviting the public to come, and all of you, of course. We would like the members of the public that show up to meet their district representatives and talk about district issues. We're also looking for feedback and ideas concerning the land use plan and Helena Forward. So, we invite all of you to come. The, following that open house, we'll be hosting our regular meeting, which is also open to the public. So, unless there's any questions, I will yield.
Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Kiper, aside from like tonight's meeting and your comments here, how are you making the public aware?
So, Mayor, Commissioner Logan, we are, we've been posting flyers. We've been hitting our social media and trying to get word, get the word out through word of mouth, so to speak. So, that's been our main effort. So far, we've heard that organizations around Helena are pretty interested in coming, so we're expecting a pretty good turnout.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you, Mr. Kiper.
All right, thank you.
Regular items. Consider an ordinance, amended City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097, and official zoning map for the City of Helena. Planner Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, tonight I have for you, uh, first passage of a zone change from R-two to PLI at thirteen twenty-nine North Benton. And I apologize for the wordiness of this legal description again this evening. Uh, what I have in front of you is consideration of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R-two residential to public lands and institutions, PLI, for the property legally described as the north nine feet of the east seventy feet of Lot fifteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, in the east seventy feet of the south ten feet of Lot thirteen, in the east seventy feet of Lot fourteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, and the east ten feet of the west fifty feet of the south ten feet of Lot thirteen, in the east ten feet of the west fifty feet of Lot fourteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, and Lot sixteen in the west fifty feet of the north nine feet in the south forty-one feet of Lot fifteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, and Lot one A of block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as described in COS three three zero zero seven seven two. Uh, this property is generally located on the northeast side of the intersection of Benton Euclid in Lyndale. It is where the houses formerly sat adjacent to Carroll College that were removed, I believe, last year. The current zoning designation is R-two. Uh, the applicant is seeking a zone change to PLI. This will unify the zoning of the entire Carroll College campus and the applicant states this will allow him to maximize the lots for future development. Uh, the top two pictures show the property in question. The bottom two show the adjacent B-two and R-three zoning. Uh, the R-two residential districts provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development. The PLI district provides for and applies to public and quasi-public institutional uses in lands. And the twenty nineteen growth policy designates this as mixed use, places where people can work, live, play, and learn. Montana Code seventy-six dash two dash three oh four gives the criterion guidelines for zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be made in accordance with a growth policy and designed to secure from fire, or secure safety from fire and other dangers, promote public health, public safety, and general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. In adopting zoning regulations, the governing body shall consider the reasonable provision of adequate light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation, promotion of compatible urban growth, the character of the district and its suitability for particular uses, and conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land. Uh, the state of the twenty nineteen growth policy designates this as mixed use. The expansion of the PLI zoning will align with current uses in the vicinity. Uh, and this change is compatible and consistent with its location along one of Helena's commercial This area serves as kind of a nexus of residential, commercial, and educational uses, and this proposed zoning is not expected to create any new detrimental impacts. It's presently served by City of Helena Services. A traffic analysis was conducted and it was determined that it would not increase traffic more than two hundred trips per day to require a traffic impact study. Department comments, transportation, utility, legal, and engineering, provided responses of no comment. Fire department stated they approved this zone change and any construction will be evaluated for current fire code. Uh, the police department did not provide comment. Uh, this change aligns with goals one in ten of the growth policy to promote and sustain Helena's economic vitality and to plan for and establish types and quantities of land use, uh, supporting community needs. It also aligns with objectives seventy-six, seventy-seven, eighty, and eighty-six, uh, supporting land use patterns that promote compatible development, uh, revising zoning designation with careful consideration, including the future land use and compatible surrounding land, uh, promoting the development of a variety of compatible types, and promoting the redevelopment of vacant or underutilized properties. Based on that, the proposed zoning would adhere to the goals and policies of the um, growth policy. And this will not create any new unique impacts due to its alignment with the existing PLI zoning. Uh, the zoning commission meeting was legally noticed in the independent record on July twenty-seventh. Neighbor notices were sent at that time to all properties within a hundred and fifty feet and a notice sign was placed on the property. Uh, the zoning commission voted on August thirteenth to approve this recommendation uh, with a three to zero vote. And as of today, there have been zero public comments received on this project. Uh, it is city staff's recommendation that to move to recommend approval of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R-two to PLI for the previously described legal description. I thank you for your time and are there any questions for city staff at this moment?
Thank you, Planner Holland. Commissioners?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so in the uh, uses under PLI, that will include like dorms, for example, is that correct?
Yes, it would be all uses for the Carroll College as a whole.
Okay.
I'm not sure of the applicant's plans at this moment.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Thank you. Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll take one for the team here. I move to uh, recommend approval of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R-two residential to public lands and institutions, PLI, for the property legally described as the north nine feet of the east seventy feet of Lot fifteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark, Montana, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the east seventy feet of the south ten feet of Lot thirteen and east seventy feet of Lot fourteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and the east ten feet of the west fifty feet of the south ten feet of Lot thirteen and the east ten feet of the west fifty feet of Lot fourteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and Lot sixteen in the west fifty feet of the north nine feet and the south forty-one feet of Lot fifteen in block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, and Lot one A of block one of the Capitol Hill addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as described in COS three three zero zero seven seven two.
Second.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and official zoning map of the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R-two residential to R-three residential for the property legally described as lots eighteen through twenty in block twenty-nine of the Corbin subdivision in the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County. Planner Alvarez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. As introduced, I am Michael Alvarez. I'm planner with the City of Helena's Community Development Department. My item tonight is one oh two South Cook Street. More specifically, this is consideration of first passage of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R-two residential to R-three residential for the property legally described as lots eighteen through twenty in block twenty-nine of the Corbin subdivision to the City of Helena. The application for uh, this zone change indicates that there is an associated land use case. The associated land use case was a conditional use permit for a professional office use on the property. That application has been withdrawn. The property is generally located on the southwest side of the intersection of East Broadway Street and South Cook Street. The current zoning designation is R-two residential. The applicant is seeking that zone change to R-three residential. R-three zoning is not out of alignment with the zoning of the area. This is a predominantly residential zoned area, including adjacent property, and R-three is a residential zone type. R-three zoning would allow for limited commercial activity on the site with conditional use permit approval. And on your screen is their plot map. The R-two residential districts provide for residential dwellings and limited non-residential development that protects and enhances the residential nature of the area. The R-three residential district provides for the development of a mixture of residential structures to serve varied housing needs and allows limited compatible non-residential uses. So the future land use map here designates the blocks lining the south side of East Broadway Street from North Montana Avenue to Lamborn Street as public for the possible expansion of the state Capitol Campus. That land use designation, or that future land use designation, public is for land that is government or quasi-government in use. And some, um, that definition further goes on to say some public uses may be incorporated into other land use categories, um, but the relevant statement is that land that is in, is that it's land that is in government or quasi-government use. The evaluation criteria is set forth in Montana Code annotated seventy-six two three oh four. These were just read to the Mayor and Commission. Would you like me to repeat them again? At, at the Mayor's discretion? Uh, it's seventy-six two three oh four. The criterion guidelines for zoning regulations, one, zoning regulations must be made in accordance with a growth policy and be designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. In the adoption of zoning regulations, the municipal governing body shall consider the reasonable provision of adequate light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, promotion of compatible urban growth, the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. Comparing the land use tables of the R-two and R-three zoning districts with the property's future land use designation finds that while neither zoning district is an ideal match for the public designation, uh, R-three allows for the predominant use type of the state Capitol's campus, which is professional office, with the approval of a conditional use permit and is therefore a better match to the future land use map than R-two. The subject property is served by all City of Helena Emergency Services and utility, and utilities. Um, and while no development is associated with this zone change application, a roughly quarter acre property zoned as R-three could increase the number of trips generated by the property per day. However, the expected amount is far below the two hundred trip per day requirement to provide a traffic impact study. And any likely building of the property wouldn't require any changes to the area's street network. Although I should add, if the structure were to be demolished and a new structure built, a new sidewalk would need to be installed on Cook Street. Department comments, no departments provided comments specific to this zone change. Um, there had been uh, comments originally attached to the conditional use permit. The proposed zone change aligns with several goals and objectives in the city's growth policy, namely upzoning matches the projected development pattern for the state Capitol Campus, increasing the city's ability to add commercial or public office space that would benefit from that proximity. Um, so this aligns with goal ten, objective seventy-seven, eighty-two, and ninety-nine. The proposed zone change to R-three will increase consistency with adjacent properties and increase development opportunities unique to the area. The proposed zoning is not expected to create detrimental impacts to the surrounding properties because this zone type already exists adjacent to the subject property and affords for similar uses found in the vicinity. The city commission meeting was legally noticed in the Helena Independent Record on seven twenty-seven twenty-four. Um, I will remember this um, uh, is a continuation of a previous uh, meeting held on August twelfth. Um, there was an ordinance attached, so um, uh, we're looking at it again. Neighbor notices were sent to property owners within a hundred and fifty feet on July first twenty-four. Uh, neighbor notices were sent again with new dates for this meeting, uh, for uh, uh, the public hearing, um, on um, September fifth twenty-four. A new legal ad was run on nine seventeen twenty-four for the proposed ten twenty-one public hearing date. And uh, notice signs was placed on Cook Street to the southwest of the intersection at East Broadway Street and South Cook Street, June twenty-fourth. I should note here, a new sign with the uh, public hearing date for ten twenty-one is up at the property now. Um, and as of July ninth, um, which is the, uh, prior to the zoning commission date, uh, we had three comments in opposition were received that were sent out via email this morning. I apologize for them not being in your pockets. Um, staff and the zoning commission recommends approval of an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number three zero nine seven and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R-two residential to R-three residential for the property legally described as lots eighteen to twenty in block twenty-nine of the Corbin subdivision to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. I am available for your questions.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? Please step forward.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I'm Jim Penish. I live at thirteen oh two Highland, which is on Cook and Highland, so I was on the map. The reason why I'm here is along with lots of other neighbors, R-two is just perfect for us. We don't need businesses in residential in the area that we're at. As you know, nationally, middle-class housing is getting harder to find. Now we're looking at turning another class, house into a lobbying hotel. It took, as you may know from previous city meetings, it took those of us that live on Cook and Highland, my back door's on Cook, by the way, um, your efforts, the commission to make that a residential-only parking zone. So that means that the lobbyists from the tavern owners, whoever is going to be using that property legally cannot park on that street without a resident permission from the city. So um, I'm in opposition to R-three because I think that we're in hard enough times now. We need more residential houses. We don't need a lobbying house on our residential area with school kids walking across and in danger with no sidewalks of being hit by lobbyists who are more- in danger with no sidewalks of being hit by lobbyists who are more attendant to what they're doing. Why is this consideration being made? One individual. I have not received questions from the commission about my thoughts as a homeowner. I haven't been edified by anybody regarding that other than the mail that Mr. Alvarez gave out. And I don't know why R2 is being considered to be changed. I don't think it should be. So that's my opinion, and I'm sticking with it.
Thank you, Mr. Penish. Do we have any other public comments on this topic?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioner John Iverson. I'm the owner of the subject property. Originally, we had hoped to turn this house into a place where I could operate my lobbying practice. However, when I went through, and I should back up and say thank you to the city staff for all the work they put into this. This is my first dive into zoning, and it's, it's a bit more complicated than I first realized. So it's been a bit of a lesson there. But because of the complicated nature of taking a residential house and turning it into an office space, we've decided to withdraw the conditional use permit. However, we had already applied for the zoning change, and in that process, the city staff identified that it was an appropriate change from R2 to R3. And so we felt, we might as well just, when I say we, I mean me and my wife, just thought we would continue with this process. However, we plan at this time to continue to this house as a residential use. And that's what we, if we were to change that, of course, we'd have to come before the City Commission. So we'd ask that you approve the change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments on this topic?
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Morris Hamel. I live at 1308 Highland Street. We have been there for 43 years, and we have gone through several bouts of proposed zoning changes to allow businesses in our area. And we are dead set against it. Changing the zoning to R3 would make it possible to use the property for purposes other than residential. It's a residential area. It has been, and we hope it always will be. We don't want it to turn into an area like north of the Capitol for those two blocks or all those houses, or state businesses, or lobbying businesses. We don't want that. Nobody in our area does. So please, protect our rights and our property by not allowing this change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online? Oh, please.
My name is Kathleen Hamel, and I'm Morris' wife. Live at 1308 Highland, and I'd just like to point out a few things about that property. It's like a block and a half from Jefferson School. The number of children that walk by every day, ride their bikes by, go on scooters, is increasing all the time as that has become more vogue these days. And I really think it's a disservice to those kids and families to increase traffic in any way. I think businesses along that area of Broadway is going to be a detriment. The parking issue is horrendous. Parking around the Capitol is tough already. It's just going to push traffic up onto Highland Street more. The school district last year, I don't believe it was just the school district, I think the city was involved in putting in sidewalks on Highland. The children from Jefferson are told if they're going east, they need to go down Highland instead of Broadway or Winnie, and then spread out from there. And I think that's a reasonable safety concern that I really think that should make your attention, or should take your attention to the safety issues. We talked at our meeting last time about these issues, and it seemed like the zoning commission just really had already made up their minds, and I really hope that's not true. I hope that you folks haven't done the same. And I guess I'm rather disappointed Mr. Iverson's, you know, wanting to change all this. He buys a house and within a few weeks wants to change the whole integrity of the neighborhood. We love our neighborhood as just that, a residential neighborhood, and we really don't want businesses. I also think you'd be doing a disservice to other places in town that have business commercial property available, and I think that you really should give this some serious consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments? Please. Oh, no, someone behind you, Mr. Penish.
Excuse me, I'm getting old and forgetful. I used to work with ADA. To make that house into an ADA home is a joke because of the driveway, because of the width of it, because of how close it is to the alley, and the hill that goes up it would be almost impossible. So when they say, oh, I would make it ADA, no, that would be a ridiculous thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Greg Holzman, H-O-L-Z-M-A-N. I just had two questions slash comments, I guess. One, I really would like to put forth that the 150 feet and the advertising or putting something in one day in the Helena IR is pretty archaic for this day and age. I don't think a lot of people are seeing that. We, I guess, are not in, within 150 feet, although we are one house over after the road there. So we never did receive this if it wasn't for our neighbors. So for more people to have an understanding of what's going on in their community, I think that would be very helpful. The other thing I just, as we're looking for the Helena Forward programs that you're looking at right now, I hope that the idea of how many open commercial areas, places that are not being used, that are trying to get occupants, are being looked at as we're trying to, thinking about moving into residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, again, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I'm sorry I didn't catch this earlier, but it's for Planner Holland, if, if I could.
No, Alvarez.
Planner Alvarez, I'm sorry. Sorry, Michael. So I guess I'm curious if, if you have a map of the whole district that we're considering changing from R2 to R3, a visual. I did, I was kind of going through the packet. Maybe you could point me to the page? Or maybe you could show it on the screen here.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. It's just the, the one house here on the corner. So the house directly to the west of it there is, it's actually a small apartment building, I believe it's a fourplex, has R3 zoning. It's just this single dwelling unit home on the corner here. The area that I was alluding to from, or not alluding to, the, the area that I spoke of from North Montana to Lamborn Street is designated public on the future land use map in our growth policy. But we're, we're not changing that whole area. We're just changing this one home.
So that's it?
That's it, yes.
Okay, thank you. I think, yeah, I think I've got 300 up, so thank you. So that's it? That's the, the change from R2 to R3 is that property?
Mayor and Commission, that is correct. It is just the one property.
Just wanted to make sure I had that clear. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Ray. Planner Alvarez, can you maybe talk a little bit about how, so, so much of zoning changes comes from its alignment with the growth policy? And that's what we have to make our decisions on or with what are in the findings and compliance with the growth policy? Can you talk about how we get to this point in the growth policy's recommendation for public and how we make that evaluation when we do the findings of fact?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. So for, something we rely on very heavily when we are looking for compliance with the growth policy is the future land use map and is its definitions and designations. That's the roadmap that we lean on most heavily for a zone change. We, that's, that's the, the part of the zoning chapter that we're looking to conform The idea with the public designation south of Broad Street, Broadway Street, and the 2019 plan is slightly before my time, but is primarily because the state doesn't actually need to listen to our zoning so much. They have to, if they wanted to buy property over there and expand, to go against our zoning, they would need to hold a public hearing, but they wouldn't be bound by any, there's no voting mechanism or anything like that. They, they simply need to hold a hearing. They're a huge employer, and this is just a, a way to, for, for the city to allow industry to aggregate as it needs to near the, the, the state. But as the state expands, there's not a ton that the municipality can, can do. So coming into alignment with them at the time, I believe, seemed like the best idea.
Planner Alvarez, did I hear the petitioner saying that he's going to change his mind to make it a residential, that he's moving into the resident, making it a resident?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. He himself, I don't believe, is moving into the resident. He is, originally, he wanted this because of its proximity, because, and I, I don't mean to speak for him when he's in the audience, but my understanding was he wanted this originally for an, an office. He is also a landlord and rents out apartments and other things around town. He may use this for his personal use as a, as a second home that's simply closer to the Capitol when it's in session. But he's better equipped to answer that than me. He doesn't intend to run an office here anymore.
Okay, thank you. And as someone mentioned, something about the independent record, I know that these days they bring out papers three times a week. It's not seven days a week, so we may want to start looking at something like that because it's not as reliable anymore because there's only, there's only three times a week, and if you miss one of those days, thinking that is going to be in, is going to be a disservice to the, to whomever we're trying to reach.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I think you're right, that that is a problem that's on the horizon. We actually have it better than many jurisdictions. It's a state requirement to put it into the paper of record. Other municipalities around are, are putting their ads in the Helena IR, and many of the people wouldn't think that they're actually served by that paper, so.
Yes, so what I'm saying, I think we should find, while we are following the rules and regulation by the state, I think we should also make extra effort to put it wherever, Facebook, whatever, our website, wherever we put it. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. And we do have this up on our current projects page on our website as well. We don't normally allude to that here with the assumption that it's available sort of after the fact as opposed to something that gets routinely combed through.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any others? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Planner Alvarez, there was a slide earlier about R2 versus R3, and that, exactly. Limited non-residential development in R2 that protects and enhances. So in an R2 district, could you have any type of a home office, like if I worked from home and had an office, would that be allowed in an R2?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Home occupations are allowed in, in the R2.
So the difference between R2 and R3 is that somebody who did not live there could come to work there?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. And beyond that, have employees arriving to it, in which case, a number of other laws, and most pertinent in this case, ADA, comes into, to, into effect. So once other people need to start showing up to a business, it needs to be available to any member of the public.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, but that would require a conditional use permit, correct?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, yes. That would require a conditional use permit. And the, the big thing that has prevented this from becoming an office is a rather expensive upgrade to the home.
Okay. Mr. Ray, can I ask one more question? Those two properties to the west that are currently R3, do we know when those were, became R3?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. I don't have that, I, I, I can provide that at a later date, but I don't have that information at this time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And what are those two properties to the west right now? Are they being operated as businesses?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. The two properties right there to the west are both apartments that, they're not single-family homes, they're multifamily. And then there is a business on the corner there at East Broadway and North Mon, or in South Montana there, on the other side of Broadway Court that you can see in this picture. That's got a, the National Association of Realtors, I believe.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one more question. Sorry. May I ask a question really briefly for Mr. Planner Alvarez? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had heard from the applicant, wants to withdraw, but wants to proceed with the R2 to R3. What is the benefit of continuing with the process with that?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. It, it is for, for future development purposes, R3 does allow for slightly more different types of development, certainly with like multifamily residential. If to move in businesses, R3 still generally requires a CUP for the few business types that it allows in, for instance, general services or professional offices. Also, the application for the zone change that was originally submitted is non-refundable.
Mr. Mayor, so the, the, I understand the concern of the neighbors. As it stands today, the home should, should this pass and it move from R2 to R3, it will remain residential, and it would take another act of the commission if business practices were ever to occur here. Is that accurate?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission, yes. Another act would be required out of the Mayor and Commission.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion. No motion, it feels right?
Mr. Mayor, I think, I'm, I think if we're going to, I'd rather we just table or, I, I think it's it's appropriate that we make a motion, and should it fail, fine, but I think it's most appropriate that at least a motion be made. So I would move to approve an ordinance amending the City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from R2 to R3 for the property legally described as lots 18 through 20 in Block 29 of the Corbin addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Sorry, had to catch up there for a second. Aye. Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
No.
The motion carries four to one.
Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
Use it for what he wanted to use it for. Why not just revert back to R2 and be done with it? It's unfortunate the person wanted to have a business, but it's more unfortunate for more of us in the neighborhood that we would have to wait and listen for it to, once again, be brought up to a commercial site. So I guess I disagree. I agree with Mayor Collins on voting no on that, and I feel very strongly about it because I live exactly kitty-corner from that house.
Mayor and Commissioners, at the start of this meeting, Mayor Collins talked about voting and democracy, where a majority of people should rule. You have one person that wants to change the zoning of a whole neighborhood, and how many of us spoke against it, and there are many more who couldn't be here. So where is the democracy in this?
Is there any other from the public who wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Commissioners, any final comments? This meeting is adjourned.